Okay, folks, welcome to this, the annual meeting of the council for 2024. As the annual meeting of the councils. The first agenda item, 24/25/01 is the election of the chair. The receiving nominations and electors in town halls on 25/25/2024.
My preferred council gentleman, I'll send it.
Any other proposals?
She says all four.
So, all in favour? I suppose I'm better than you, so. So, 24/25/02, the election of the vice-chair. We've got nominations for the vice-chair.
Council gentleman.
Got second of the councillors, isn't there? Any other nominations for the vice-chair? All in favour? Welcome councillor gentleman to the vice-chair. 23/25/03, I've gone back again. Okay, 24/25/04, chairs and locks. Give our agenda tonight, I'm gonna keep this really short. So, obviously, it is the start of a new municipal year. Congratulations to councillor Willard for successfully becoming a district councillor for Bingley Road. We'll probably come on to this on the email update, but we do have our D-Day anniversary event on Thursday at 6 o'clock in Market Square. If you'd like to invite everybody to attend, who wishes to. I think that's it today. 24/25/04, apologies for absence, to give more things to the board. Councillor Drucker and councillor Coe.
Both, perhaps, I'll check it in.
Both like councillors, that's what I said, I can be like absolutely, it was all in favour of us. 24/25/05, disclosure of interest. So, you've seen declarations of interest to councillors, items on the agenda. Do you have any? Long, have you seen written requests for this consent? I see long list. Okay, so we're going with one. 24/25/06, minutes of the previous meeting to approve the minutes of previous meeting. Help them to sort of the table. Does anybody have any comments or corrections?
So proposed, please.
So proposed by councillor Williams. Second base, I'm here, forward by about 10 minutes. 24/25/07, confidential items, discussing confidence after item to the board. 25/31, does anybody have any items they wish to move from this? Okay, then we're moving on to 24/25/08, public participation. Members of the public are reminded that this is their opportunity to speak to the main committee on any topic relevant to work with council or however they may not speak to the rest of the meeting, unless it's specifically invited to do so. This little demo over the middle does actually record our meetings. So, whatever you say will be available on YouTube tomorrow, I think. So, Veronica, I didn't ask you this earlier, but.
Yes, so, good evening, everybody. My name is Veronica, Veronica Leyge, that's L-E-Y-G-U-E. I live in 27 Woodvale Crescent, top of Bingley. And from tonight, for advice, from anybody, advice, guidance, tips, recommendations, anything I can bring to, to, well, to myself and some of the residents of Woodvale Crescent, it's a very simple matter. We have a piece of wasteland that we would like to transform into something a little bit more attractive. One of the neighbours has actually, what's the word, cleared it, so, big efforts. Such operation happened about three years ago, another neighbour took up on himself to actually clear the area, but unfortunately, things do grow back. So, at the moment, I was wondering whether there was anything that somebody could recommend, somebody in the council, somebody could help us basically clear this land once and for all of all the brambles, nettles, and so forth, so that we can create some kind of, I don't know, a more pleasant little aspect at the corner of Woodvale Crescent.
Are those, those big roads, etcetera?
The impression is, we don't know. It's some kind of land which is never maintained, it looks like a verge, that, I don't know, nobody looks after. So, sort of, we don't know, we won't know that.
Can you say where it is again, please? Because Woodvale Crescent hasn't come up on my.
Woodvale, Woodvale Crescent.
That'll be why, then, thank you.
So, Woodvale Crescent is shaped like a ball's shoe. So, when you access it from the top and you go down and you go back, you are the bottom of the ball's shoe. It's a piece of land at the corner, which is just at the top of this little shoe. Yeah.
So, that, would our, do we think it was probably a very, correct?
It would be. I'd just suggest that we get in touch with Bradford Council to start this. We've just had a bit of a situation in Cotting where Bradford Council's been questioning a piece of land that's actually been legally transferred, but first, that's the first move. The second move is, how many of you are there?
I suppose.
That's, I assume it's gonna be maintained as volunteers, is it?
Yeah.
How many have you got?
Well, I don't know, about two.
Pardon?
Two.
Two?
Two, but it's all in me, that it's just clear, yeah, so we need to keep momentum.
Let me see, let me see the side, the side first.
You need to see the side.
I said I wouldn't, to, to, to give a, yeah, but don't tell me how big it is, does it? You know.
I do have this, how does, at the size of, a third of the size of the shoe.
Third of the size of the shoe.
Yeah, sorry.
It's, it's, it's a manageable space.
It is, but it's not here.
So, you're looking, you're looking for something to clear, clear it, basically.
Clear it properly, yeah, you need to dig up the soil.
And you've got no money?
And I've got no money.
Yeah. Sorry, John. Yeah, that's fine. I guess it's, I mean, if I'm looking at the right, is it the second entrance to Woodville? If you come down.
Yeah, as I said, it's, it's a, it's a long shoe, but you've got two entrances.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's the second one, if you go down, it would be on your right hand side.
Okay.
Yeah.
Down by, down by the pathway, I think.
Yeah, by, what I call the snicket.
The snicket, again.
The pathway, yeah.
Yeah, it's on the tree, I don't know, I don't really see it, it's going on.
I mean, I think if people said the best thing to do would be to contact the council, I'd start with the board offices, which we could, the board offices.
Yeah, okay.
Probably start with Andy.
Andy Alderson.
Andy.
Alderson.
Sorry, too late.
Shall I, shall I, that's my board.
Oh, right.
Shall I pick it up and up there?
Shall I give you my contacts? How are we going to do this? Yeah, and you will be able to guide, guide me? Yeah.
Find me on the council website?
Oh, good, yes, sorry, yes.
You can find me on the council website.
Council website.
And it'll take for your, your.
So, shall I get in touch with you, Stephen? Okay, I shall do that, thank you very much, most appreciated, thank you very much.
I think this, I think the chair, just like I said, it's really commendable that people are volunteering groups in the situations that we've got regarding maintenance, maintenance around the area, anything that's gonna throw in the script.
Yeah, thank you very much, but, yeah, yeah. So, thank you for any support, yeah, Stephen, you can, or Steve, sorry, you can bring, that would be much appreciated, thank you.
I mean, the other thing we can do for you is put you in contact with some of the other local groups that look at the small spaces, if you think, with a friend, Joe Wood, maybe some pointers as to how to set us to doing it.
That would be much appreciated. Do, do I, do I need to leave my details here?
No, just give me the number.
Just these numbers, and then we'll, we'll pick it up.
Thank you.
Jen, can I just ask for the, obviously, we've got chairs and chairs, we would go here, you would like to speak, you know, the one items. Well, yeah, that's, that's fair, that's fine. Helen? You're fine?
Yes.
So, do you have anything on road?
I'm supporting.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we're moving on to the public participation then. So, our next item is 24/25/09, the declaration to ward councils. Our existing board councillors, like, tonight, and it's quite soon for councillor Willard to have picked up on anything, but Jen, is there anything?
There's only a couple of this, like, this highlight. Colleagues should be aware, because the new Lord Mayor was appointed last week, councillor Beverly Malady. As ever with mayors, and indeed their deputies, they're always keen to look for opportunities to visit community groups, childhood organisations, and so on and so forth. So, if either he is a councillor or any of the community groups are aware of, think that there's a suitable and big group invite at one of the civic dignitaries, please let us know and we can, you know, make representations with the Lord Mayor's office. The Lord Mayor tends not to say, she responds, or they respond to invitations, not the other way around. So, if people think there's good community things, which is like mayors or civic dignitaries to be in, we can always ask the Lord Mayor's office, and they can either come or they can't come, but it's worthwhile, so. The, the only other thing, and this is purely Cottingly related issue, which actually affects Bingley as well, there's been a number of concerns raised about traffic build-up around the Downey Gap, and council's waste and recycling centre, particularly at weekends, where there's been reports, well, there have been stuck in the traffic, and I'm not going to tell you that, but I have to go past it. It's, it's, it's a problem being exacerbated, I suppose, presumably by the closure of other tips, three other tips in the district, and the fact that the Downey Gap closes on Mondays. So, whether the weather's good, there will be lots of traffic. This is not only an inconvenience to people, but also it's possibly dangerous at times, because when I went last time, there was traffic queuing from both directions. If you're not going into the tip particularly, and you want to get round the blind bend over the bridge, it's, you, you, I'd have to take a risk or just wait in the queue until all of the traffic going into the tips is not there. So, a number of people have raised that. I've raised it with the council to see whether any of the traffic management arrangements that we put in place are not comfortably, they are, but can be, but I've, I've mentioned that, and I think that will be ongoing this year. The other, I've sort of linked issue, which is a Cottingly related issue, again, can have general application, is continued problems of flights of people, particularly in the top part of Cottingly, around the Lee Lane area, and they're saying country lane type things, where there's been a few, I mean, there's always been a bit of a problem there, but there's been a few problems, just in the two weeks I've been in office, so to speak. So, that is something which is certainly a concern, colleagues. I know councillor Good, who, we meet in residence about a related matter the other day, but that was certainly a lot of frustration in some quarters about what can be done. Now, it's not easy, what can be done about flight, but it's certainly an ongoing issue which we should be aware of. Obviously, in Bingley proper tends to be ultra element, and parts of high school tend to, tend to be in risk areas, but I think it's something we should be aware of.
Yeah. I think from my perspective, I know most of the tips are shut on a Monday, but most people don't enter around, like, the one completely, it's actually still open on a Monday.
I went there, the queue was over an hour, I sacked it off on the Monday, because the other one was shut.
I've, I've been, I've been there on Monday, it looks straight, it depends if they're moving, stuff, I'm not gonna tell them my favourite times, because I'm lying. Guess I could.
I think it's to our stakeholders, traffic management, if they just took one of the, one of the operatives out and directed the traffic, I've had that same thing, where if you're going from Bedford End, you're struggling, because they're queuing from the other way, and then going into the tip first, so, if you go around, if there was somebody on the corner, corner, that, that.
I think, I think the problem is.
That'd help you through traffic.
Because you need someone, almost like a fisherman, and you need someone that, that is supposed to direct it, because that's where the queue's at. It is, it is bad.
Trouble, don't we?
Yeah.
And stopping one elsewhere.
But I don't know that, other than the representations that are with Bingley, I don't have any other ones.
No, probably, probably.
At this point, yeah. Okay, then, we'll move on. Can we have one meeting, please, guys? We're moving on to 24/25/10, on the night, so, Bingley Pool.
So, let me, so I can be seen more, you know. Good evening, everybody. My name's Jeremy Sackram, co-chair of Friends of Bingley Pool, along with Theo behind me, and definitely have another, other trustees in the room as well. We just wanted to give you an update on where the thing stands with the project, the other place renovated. So, since the funding announcement came through in March, we held meetings with district councillors, council staff, our local MP, and we've exchanged messages with several other stakeholders, including the Labour candidate for constituency. Through these meetings, we have developed a general picture of the project that suggests that building or renovating the pool will be the relatively straightforward part of the process, though not without its pitfalls, and our focus will instead be on the following: determining this specification for the pool, and determining the operating model for the pool and its place within local leisure provision in general. The next phase of the process sees the project going before Bradford Council's executive committee next Tuesday, 4th of June, which our trustees will be in attendance. And the recommendation in the agenda for that meeting reads as follows: That the executive provide approval for the project to progress to the next stage, to revalidation; acknowledge the difficulties the council faces in being able to provide match funding and assume responsibility for delivering these projects; agree the council continues to try to identify alternative sources of match funding for the project, and close the opening pool gym with immediate effect. Following from that third point about match funding, this would involve market testing the scheme as two options, number one as a single entity, and number two as a bundle with the town hall site, to find a development partner who can fund, construct, and operate the product. In alignment with this, the council will continue its dialogue with Department for Leveling Up House Communities, surrounding the terms and conditions of the award, and this option also to the savings identified in its force review. So, that is the, the item that will be passed over to at that meeting. Friends of Bingley Pool will be discussing these points at our own meeting this Thursday, and we have a limited time to develop any coordinated response on it, but we can give some meeting impressions. We do note that the pool is still being considered as a bundle with the town hall. From our surveys, we know that Bingley residents want a pool that serves schools to local community and local clubs. The developer will only consider the pool if it gets access to the town hall as well, may perhaps not be aligned in delivering these goals, particularly school lessons, and may instead be oriented towards Bradford Council's previous approach of turning the town hall and pool building into a spa for town. The pool is now well-funded, and delivering an excellent pool facility should be the sole focus. This leads into the second point of ours, that the pool may not be considered as part of Bradford's overall leisure strategy. The council is still considering the Squire Lane Superpool project as a going concern, despite the loss of Harpitz Partnership funding in the autumn, when the NHS pulled out the project. And a member of the executive has suggested verbally that Bingley Schools may be directed there for lessons, or to Bradford Girls' School, rather than to a new facility on their doorstep. This may not have been a realistic or serious comment from the council in question, but it does indicate an attitude that the Bingley project will be delivered outside of the council legislature, either to lower specification to save money, or to one determined by the private market, rather than to local interest. So, going forward, what we want to do as the Friends Group is to ensure the following: that Bingley Pool is taken off the list of Bradford Council's assets for sale, as published last year, before this funding was made known; that the pool is delivered to a specification that will best ensure longevity, which in our opinion is a six-lane pool capable of supporting local competitive events; and that the pool is considered as a separate asset to the town hall. We do remain convinced, though, that all parties can work together to deliver these goals, especially now that capital funding is on the table, and that it's in the best interests of the city, town, and community to deliver these goals, and we ask for town councils continuing support in delivering these aims. We'll keep the town council and the public informed of progress, and our trustees present tonight can answer any immediate questions for rising. Thank you.
Could I just say something, and I've, I've, after you've talked, you've said, I've got Bradford Council paper, the executive paper, which they're gonna be discussing next week, which we refer to, just a couple of snippets from it. They say they're closing the gym, they want to close the gym immediately. And just for clarity, when the paper goes to the executive, there's no question that the recommendations will be what is passed, I don't think there's any doubt about that. But, so, they want to close the gym immediately, and they say that, A, it's losing lots of money, but, but B, because they say that further detailed investigation will need to be done for the whole building in sense to, as part of the feasibility study. But just an interesting snippet, it says that at the moment, the gym on its own is effectively costing the council £307,000 a year in overall subsidy, and the usage is low, with just 860 visits per year, and mostly upon, obviously, repeat users. And it says, and I don't know, I can only read the song, they call it, that this is a substantive visit calculation of £357,000.
Can I just comment on that, if I may?
You may, yes.
That's a constructive environment by a certain officer, in my humble opinion, in the way that the swimming pool, its reduction in usage was constructed over many years, the closure of the early morning sessions, et cetera, and the current situation. Have you tried to find out if the gym is open via the council website?
Not yet.
It's almost impossible. So, nobody knows it's open.
Yeah, I do find it very problematic, because the building looks virtually deserted.
It's almost impossible. I, I actually used the facilities, and I had great difficulty in actually finding the site to let me know that it was open, because I actually wanted to go and find out some information from somebody in there, and I, I, when I got there, within the opening hours, I couldn't get into the building.
Yeah, the point you're taking, yeah. The, the other thing which, and I'm sure the friends have depicted, is it seems very much, is it the council are edging the boards, favouring, if the pools could be rebuilt, favouring a four-lane pool, that's what it sounds like to me.
That was, that was demonstrated by Christoph Ahma in the last meeting we had.
Yeah, of the three costed options that they've looked at.
That's his favourite.
Yeah, four-lane.
Again, it's a constructive environment by certain council, certain officers.
Yeah, four-lane renovation, six-lane renovation, and the demolition, rebuild, and three options that they recosted, and demolish is the most expensive, four-lane renovation is the least expensive.
And, and, pick it up in the paper, though it doesn't go into detail, I think, there are also, there's some, sort of, concern about, even, if, when, if, when the pool is built, what will be the future of operational arrangements, and indeed, you know, sustainability financially moving forward? Have the, have the council been speaking with the friends about how they would want to take that forward? Because you, remember, did a business case feasibility, so.
The last meeting we had, they ruled out Friends of Bingley Pool returning the cap. But that was suggested, but in that meeting also was suggested that any funding for running any facility was being reserved for Squire Lane regardless of the situation at the time. So, basically, we're second on the list from the town, from the council. So, what they're saying is that, rather than say to us, you can run it, or we will run it, or some sort of arrangement for a partnership, we'll get to a private company and we'll keep our expenses for a pool that's a family's guy, basically, because they haven't got the money to build a Squire Lane.
Which, of course, if they were to bundle it up, of course, it would be very difficult for the friends to have a long-going role in, in running the school.
I consider this, maybe I'm being cynical, but that, rather than having the town hall and saying, oh, you can have the pool as well for your hotel, and also, if you take the pool, you can have the town hall, and it's just not acceptable to people in Bingley. And what we need to do, really, is to start shouting at Bradford Council, you know, and that includes us and the town, you know, we've gotta start putting up a bit of a campaign now, I think, to make sure we get what is supposed to be delivered, because they're not even having to pay that much for it, you know, it's, 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 it's just not being given the.
So, what is the match?
Being given the support, the money is given.
Might be, can I just talk to the funding aspect? What the council has failed to mention, that when Philip Davis and Jacob Young visited the site, Jacob Young said at the time, if they require any upgrade because of inflation, that money was available. Council has refused to comment on that. So, there's, there's no shortage of money. I might also add that when it comes to match funding, 50, five million euro and the interest paid as you're going, the balloon payment on that, of the public worth loan for, at the end of the term, will be £5 million quid. So, it's free money, so, they, they need enough to fire me, it's no hassle whatsoever. So, they are, again, the money, the funding is for a pool for Bingley, it's not for a joint enterprise.
The, the numbers in the document that will be going to the executive were the six-lane pool, valued 17.1 million pounds, requiring a match of £2.6 million, the four-lane, 14.8 million, requiring just under £40,000, and the demolition new build, just over 18 million, requiring three and a half million of match funding. That match funding is any excess beyond the 14.4 million awarded from Leveling Up, so it doesn't include anything else apart from.
And not only that, Jacob Young said they could reduce the extra money within the 20 to make sure the pool was built.
Yeah.
And, and not only that, he's preferred to support that and lay it with the ministry, because I've got a live brief report on this, going, Philip Davis is gonna play with Jacob Young, replacing the ministry in a couple of days, supporting this concept. So, there's no, the money is not an issue, the issue is Bradford Council, I'm right.
I think it's disappointing, particularly with still talking about pursuing the Squire Lane thing, which in all reality is probably not gonna happen.
This is the, this is the, this, this, this thing, and, and I, you know, I, I, basically, I share a lot of the concerns, you know. If I can, I'll try and get to that meeting next week, I'm not quite sure.
So, what is your request of us as a council?
We're gonna have to go to our own meeting, Mr Stirling, Thursday, we only learned about the, the agenda of this other weekend, and actually, we've had to take some time to digest it, so on Thursday, we'll be having our own discussions as Friends Group to work out our overall position on this, and what arguments to take to the executive on Tuesday, after which we'll have a clear idea of the precise terms we would want to bring to the town council to support. As of now, it is essentially those points of, that I mentioned at the end, end of the presentation, of supporting a pool facility that actually will last, and it's not gonna be done on the basis of a second best to Squire Lane, that type of thing. So, yeah, we'll bring something further later.
I think that's, I think, yes.
Have you been asked to put in a consultation on, to, to report on it, what, what these are?
Not, not yet, no.
Right, would you feel, do you like to attend meeting? Okay, thank you.
We're also planning to, um, survey the residents, come into survey to residents, so we'd appreciate if you can share, which, town council, etcetera, all of that's up.
Can I ask you a technical question? Does anybody know the MPAN number for your? Does anybody know the MPAN number for your office in town? The reason for that is, the current development of energy usage and how it's done is so advanced now, that the costs of running a pool could be changed dramatically by the design of the easy system. In other words, the power can be taken when the market's negative. So if you've got the MPAN number, I would love it, because I can get the relevant information from very qualified engineers. But it must be, it's on your last bill, from the trustee government. Like, you know, in the go office? Does that tell you where the grid entry is located? All I need is your office MPAN number, I'll be able to work it out from there.
What would that show you?
Where the grid entry decides the grid or what is it?
Relevant to the pool then, if it's...
Well, you're almost next door, aren't you? If you can find that, it would be much greater, because I can provide the information on what's possible in the design.
We've got the invoices.
The other one, the top left, on the back of it. Can you send me a screenshot of that, if you'd like?
Looking at this paper again, it says the options in the council's system, and it seems that the option which they're proposing is the middle option, it's pushing it down the road a bit. Because the other options were due not in decline funding from the government, and the second on was, you know, provide the match funding and get on with it. But they've done this middle road, which has pushed it down the road a bit, and I suppose it will enable them to... variate for some time. Yet, the important thing is that, I think as colleagues know, that the funding available technically was for the two years from, two years from March. Technically, that's what government has pushed it for, and if it isn't drawn down, well, most of it, I think, if most of it isn't drawn down by that, in that period, you know, technically there isn't a guarantee of funding, even though I think the assumption would be if the project's up and running and the funding spread over a slightly longer period, that's doable. But there has to be some substantial progress in the next year, otherwise, you know, the council effectively are just lacking it for an opportunity to slip.
I think that's why we have to come in early and keep pressure on, because I don't think Squire Lane have got a huge group that are pushing Squire Lane, but we definitely have a thing with it. So if we get as much support as we possibly can, we can keep them on the territory to get some support.
Can I ask a question, does anybody know, for example, the money that was granted from the lovely upstart for Squire Lane? That part of the whole plan was NHS was going in, they've withdrawn. So how come this original plan is still proceeding? Is there anything?
There was a report in October, a public report, where they were looking to do value to reduce the facility's complexity, I think the budget, yeah, which the budget would have dropped by half at that point. So it may be that they're still going for the pool, but it will not be to the same specification as it was, when it was funded by London Health. But nonetheless, even on a reduced scale, it remains seemingly that priority.
And so they're wishing to detain the 20 million?
Yes.
We have to species through the share, you know, the cost.
Oh, sorry, yes. And maybe if you're working, so...
Do we take out an annual subscription?
So could we use, so we might need to do a survey of parish for Bingle Pool with Friends of Bingle Pool's help? We have an annual subscription, which is timed from February.
So we've got a subscription of some sort, if we can make use of others.
But we have a subscription that you could use. And we have the MPAN number, but I would suggest you drop an email to the car.
Excellent. With pleasure. Oh, we took, well, the chairman, Jeremy can do it by the chair. It'd be most grateful, so it's, it's Paul.
Can I just clarify before we finish? From the Friends' point of view, which is the Friends' preference to refurbish the existing building presumably with that six-lane pool, or to demolish and new build on the site? Have you taken a view on that yet?
I think this is why we need to do more investigation of what you get either way. With the demolish option, there's the potential to make a more twiener energy efficient building. The reason I got involved with Friends Group in the first place was because I worked for the lottery heritage fund, that sort of heritage building, which the more you take out, the less access to that form that you have. So there are considerations either way. I think where we are in agreement is at the specification of the pool itself, rather than, yeah, six-lane is competitive standard when it comes to the building surrounding that, whether it's the original, whether it's the brand new, but with the original facade, that will be decided later.
We're going to sustainability, this is my favourite. Okay, anyone before we wrap up? I think you get a review from the floor, that generally people are supportive of what you're doing, and what you can do better. We always say a problem, you know? We will, but not everyone. Anyone guys, you don't have to stay, you're more vulnerable staying, but if you wish to, to leave, please do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, we're on to 24, 25, 11, council vacancies, to receive an update on the council vacancy.
So Bradford Council, the notice has gone out, asking if anything wants to request an election, so the dead-odd, that third of June, which is... So then we'll find out whether we have an election and just call it.
So it's out, we're going to see. And I don't know if there is an election, or whether there's a dot vote, or a general section, or whether there's not quite enough comments. We will, we will wait and see. Okay, 24, 25, 11, finance, the annual government statement to receive and date the annual internal audit report, 23, before that page three of the document. Anybody got any? Comment on it, otherwise we will receive and then see if there's anything in mind. No, no comments? No, no? Okay. To complete and approve section one, the annual government statement, 23, 24, which is page four, where there are a number of questions we have to answer, and the answer was yes. Does anybody not think any of the answers are yes? So I would propose that we approve section one of the annual government statement, yes, seconded by councillor, all in favour? To approve section two of the accounting statement, 23, 24, which is page five of the paper. Anybody got any comments on page five? No? Okay. So I propose we approve, seconded by councillor, all in favour? To note the period for the exercise, I can write, can you mind what it is?
Yeah, so it's...
It's something like 12th of June to the 12th of June line.
Could you explain again what exactly this involves? Because we've already agreed, but it's not, it's that basically a lot of members of the public to come and go to all our records and books.
The time period of so long, I can't say, there's what I have to write, I'm starting to expect. So we're noting that, and then to receive and note the internal auditors for year-end supplementary report and to read any actions. A couple of other bits of things is on there. I think the moment was that, at the moment, where my website changed, not all, all the documentation. That just is... Yeah, we're after that. Oh, and there was the respect that they want, right?
Yeah.
Stop being fast, eh?
Yeah, so we need to change, send it through, hopefully it's still... For, for you to play there. So I think in terms of the supplementary report, as though the action, look at the action that those two things affect, that they're right. What was mattered, what was, what has evolved? Need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Propose by councillor, do the same thing by councillor, all in favour? Okay. To approve the schedule of payments for May, if there's any comments on the schedule of payments? No, no? Proposed by councillor? Thank you. Okay, then we've got... To agree the bank reference, 2024, page four, 2024. I think we seem to have a lot of money in the current account. I'm sure what we can book, what we can...
No issue.
Don't go through that, so... So, proposed by councillor, good?
Well, I'm not.
By councillor, all in favour? To review the asset register. I think I picked up on one, this script from CEN, which is where we've got Christmas lights, we've got one figure, but I've been adding first page and second entry.
Historic title, that we've not picked up.
The big gazebo is now housed in Bingle, not in Cuttingley. So it's, it says it's in Cuttingley.
The what, sorry?
The gazebo, it says it's in Cuttingley, it used to be in Cuttingley when we had the office in Cuttingley. It just needs a man to...
Any other comments on asset register? No, no, okay. So moving on then to the bank mandate and the financial controls. To agree the council's bank mandate, which is 24, 25.
Yes, that is the council's fourth, third, now, however, second. On the next? Appreciate your words.
I think to continue?
Yeah, sure.
So are we assuming Howard Martin's absence? And if he doesn't, councillor Williams is... Okay. To agree to council, need to vote on that?
Yeah.
So proposed, proposed for.
To agree to councillors to sign the monthly bank rest and surveillance and statements, obviously this can't be any of the previous... Anybody else? No? Okay, that's, that's, that's agreed. Stephen Ashford, well, Stephen can't do that if he takes all those...
Well, how we can score.
To agree to councillors to undertake quarterly internal controls. At the moment, we've just got the council's worker, is she willing to...
I think she would, yeah, I think she would.
Would anyone else like to take on the internal quarterly controls?
I could do, or do that conflict with my...
Yeah, you can, you can do it.
Can't do it.
You can keep it, Mark, you're in.
We have biscuits, we have biscuits, we can't be all day.
Anyone else, I would step with one for my ones, we've got one, obviously, yeah. Best practice is to, unless anyone wants to step forward.
And if you can't do any of the council's own signing, that's all.
It's a, to report the rapid which will be forward, whatever it is. To confirm all town council subscriptions for the year, so we've got Y R C A and what's that, what's that?
Society for the county's box.
There's no more of that?
No.
I need to confirm, so we just confirm? And to confirm all direct evidence, and you've got all this, have you got any of that list, that three, four, I think should not be there?
Should the new website provide be on there? Because we were engaged with them now loading the website.
We were engaged with them now loading.
Now I've got you to be on there, so you have to meet again.
Okay. So 23, 24, 25, 26, policy review. There's a number of policies in front of us. Unless anyone has any specific comments, I think policies A to E, approving review with no changes of the day, so unless anyone has any comments they want to make on those, I propose we take those together.
Yeah, second it.
So much proposed, so I propose John second it, all in favour, perhaps second it now, hasn't it? Then F, which is the financial regulations, this one has changed, it's been put dates in time, just to bring it in line with the rights, now just model, model financial regulations. I don't think there's anything of any real note in there. Does anybody have any comments? Okay, so much proposed it?
Proposed.
Proposed by councillor, said again, I don't know if they're accepted. Then I've proposed to take G H and I together, because they're local, effectively not changed, if anyone's got, any comments others make on them? Proposed by councillor, we are... Seconded by councillor G, all in favour? Okay, which then takes us to J, which is the standings, all of those. This one has changed quite a bit. Again, it is to match the model contract, but there are some elements of it where for its M G P journey, we decided some bits were relevant to us, the way we, we, we work. So things like asking councils to stand up when they're speaking, we don't think is necessary in the, the way that we function. I'm not sure, I've looked at whether two, one G actually reflects what we agree.
You took a word out of my mouth, Jim.
I do not think that.
Can I propose an amendment to one G?
Propose an amendment.
So I would should rise and... It's going to be requested by the chair.
It would be requested by the chair.
So I would propose, Chair, that we delete the word from shall to and. So the second sentence, now we, an amendment at the discretion of the chair should be... So you've got the word should in there, which doesn't prescribe it to be shall. And it removes the howl. Because at the moment, it says an amendment should not be considered unless it's required by the chair. So that's unlikely to happen. So I would just delete the offending words, which is shall not be considered unless it's requested by the chairman of the meeting and... So now it's an amendment at the discretion of the chair should be... Seconded.
I think the other things, just agreeing to people's attention within here are that both one T and three G were effectively putting the limit of people's contributions at five minutes. I don't, I don't think that's a problem. It's both members of the public and people who are talking. I think three S just, three S just codifies what we do anyway, which is that if someone wants to vote accordingly, we have to ask for that before the directive starts being taken. And then the one we decided we wouldn't do, what is in there and is here for the people to talk about, I think, which is four D six, which is where the new model standing orders say that others from council should be voting on the chair and vice chair of the standing committees. Our, our terms of relevance and our standard mode of operation, which is the first meeting after this meeting, the members of those committees currently elected the chair and the vice chair. They modeled standing orders that may stay, but we should have it at this meeting. E N G P decided that we thought we were going to make it all, but just bring it forward.
I think the E N G P did slip up in, as much as by removing four D six, we left the amendments to four D seven, which shouldn't have done. Because that word's unread there, other than the standing committee, it's just been abbreviated by a deleted six. So that should just be shall commit, shall commit the committee to apologies on chair as it was before it was created by S L C or Y R C A or whoever it is.
But that, that's a...
So those two things take, take together.
Those two things take, take together.
That second, that bit, that bit in that second one does make sense. But it's a matter for this group, if anyone thinks, really, if he's really keen for this group, should the chair, chair and vice chair of standing committees...
And leave it to the committee to decide.
Yeah, leave it to them.
That's fine. I just thought we'd let, let, let you create your attention, that was in there. And then forgetting the thing is that we had the back up twenties, that was through the risk resources, forms, now this business case. I think that's the main, the major things. So with those two amendments, so two, one G and so four D seven. I suppose we accept those standing orders?
Seconded.
Seven point answer, we're following up. So we move on to twenty four, twenty five, fourteen, appointment of committees and terms of reverence. So to review the councils, current committees and working groups, and sort of prove the terms of reverence are attached. So again, this is the same, the same as this year, I think, there's no, no committees where proposing should exist. Or there's no committees that were, that were approved, where proposing should stop. The terms of reverence are the same. Does anybody have any comments to raise on any of those?
Move was tabled.
Sorry?
Move was tabled.
Seconded is followed along, concerned.
Okay, so we're accepting all that, yeah? Cool, okay. Then four, twenty five, fifteen, election of members to committees and election groups to elect members. Four committees and working groups, committees for the year twenty four, twenty five. Actually, you know Bill, that we've made... You're already on most of this. So, okay, the events marketing communications committee, up to six, can council members... Council good?
Yes.
Councillor Ane? Me? Councillor Beckford?
No, I was poting for you.
Oh, no, we're not, yeah. But we're donating this afternoon, but it's not on the agenda. So any, any more nominations for that is marketing? No. For those three members, we do have to vote that way? Yeah, okay. So finance and general purposes committee, so nominations for finance and general purposes committee. Councillors Fenton, Heseltine, Good, Mia, Garnet.
I nominate Bob Beckford, who missed out last year.
He's not nominating himself.
No, he's not. I'm wondering whether he's asleep or not. Um, is that, is that...
No. So I think that was, how many was that?
Six. Six. Six.
David, Andrew, John, Asher.
David, Andrew, John, Asher.
Who was that?
Sir Mark.
All right, don't worry about it.
I noticed you mark, so I...
So all with honour, first then. The neighbour, planning working group.
I'm going to say me.
You're going to say, yeah. Yeah, Heseltine, Fenton, John and Gerry, I'm definitely. I'll go back to that as well. That's four. All the gates, that was councillors. Williams.
Fenton.
Fenton, Heseltine, Henry. I'm just, that's all right. I don't get to be all... All in favour? The planning committee.
Proposed by council, I should say. No. A little else, are you going on? What is that? Councillor Shaw, put his hand up.
Councillor Shaw, put his hand up. He's the only person to put his hand up, councillor Fenton. I was councillor Clark, Rachel, Takia, Lee to...
Rachel, Takia, Lee to somebody.
Have you got the full number?
We're one short.
Oh, wow.
Andrew, you want that?
Yeah.
Heseltine, Shaw, True Love.
Shaw, Fenton, Heseltine, Takia, Taylor.
Shaw, Fenton, Heseltine, Takia, Taylor.
I missed you out, Asher, I forgot you didn't put your hands up.
No, I did put my hand up, not my hands, I just thought I'd come to you.
Right, hold it, I'm ready. The staffing committee.
Heseltine, Tom, Sarah, Sarah.
Okay, councillor Bernard and Clough. So councillor, all the far right.
Yeah, can we ask Abdul Malik? I know he's been on the committee for a while, hasn't he? I have to ask you a question.
We can ask him, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
So we, we don't think so, F, the election of the chair and vice chair, as we decided on. So twenty four, twenty five, sixteen, appointment of councillors to external bodies. Agree members of representative from the following external bodies, the armed forces government. That was you, that was you, yeah. So all in favour of man, yeah? Okay, the Premier Chamber of Trade, councillor Heseltine, councillor Good, councillor True Love. Okay, all in favour? Bingling Paul? Is that one of the, that's other than you, you know, already. Is there any other councillor who's...
Me.
You, the top guy, councillor.
Me.
All in favour? Bingling World Partnership, five ten, as chair. I think absolutely they wish to have, so I'll take that one. Canal Trust. All in favour of me? The parish councils, three of them, great.
Yeah, I'll do it. I find it extremely frustrating because you often, it's when we're having meetings and when it isn't, the councillors. So you told me you'd go.
So councillor, you're into the parish councils, three of them, all in favour? Plastic free Bingling?
We didn't have on last year, we didn't have when it was noted that one of the, one of the late members of E M A C is a member of this body. That's all I was in the minute last year.
Yeah, yeah, it's done.
Nobody wants to step forward for that? Take that one over.
We didn't, we could just discuss it in the end, I can't, we can put it all for that.
Yeah. Or it might be that when we get a new councillor or some other councillors and we get further, we then will come back to all these, obviously we've got places. And I'm wired, so that's just the chair and vice chair. Okay, so twenty three, twenty four, twenty five, seventeen, insurance. Review and confirm the council and insurance provision. This was looked at at E N G P, it's meant to be recommended, we're in the room. Anybody got any comments, questions?
That's proposed.
Proposed by councillor Good, the director, seconded by councillor Heseltine, all in favour? So twenty four, twenty five, eighteen, our scheduled meeting. Unless anyone has any strong, who have questions, we continue as we have.
Yeah, they request it.
Twenty eight, the second Tuesday of the month. E N G P, the second Wednesday of the month. Full town council, last Tuesday. And staffing, as we call it, really good. Quite an E N G P after home, staffing is at the home. Starting at six thirty, full time council, starting at six thirty, minimum staffing, because of those attendings. So that's the program.
Staff can do that.
All in favour, yes? Twenty four, twenty five, nineteen, annual report, sort of group actions specification, the annual report. We're on with it.
So we still need some contributions, we need some contributions, so what we discussed last year was, that's the end for the deadlines this last year. So maybe we need to get a date in.
Are we using Teams, Joe?
Yeah.
This is a group setup.
Do you have a big version in mind?
Yes, we're a group setup.
I'll need to send a week ago that.
Yes, no, I'll have it.
Right, so I don't know, do you?
How many contributions?
You wanted confirmation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Shall I send them a green there, have we actually questioned one?
Yeah. Ideally, I think we need to get this off the council, but we're just sharing, yeah, let's, let's say. And if anyone has any thoughts on any changes, which I've already had before, that is not... And it is going to be delivered. We have worked in E N G P delivery, we're going to, we're going to go back, given it's signed, given the problems we had, but now you're on flat line with it. We'll go back to the other distribution method and just... Once we've started distributing, we'll ask by saying what areas are permitted, but some are historic, or we've had some issues with that.
I think it's a problem with paid delivery, whatever form of paid delivery, we have problems with post office. But, but also there's also problems with the other paid delivery services and every year this becomes a issue. I think they have to accept, we're not going to bear the perfect solution.
I think what we might want to try and do more this year is any additional copies that we have to get them out in the community. I don't know, successfully, we did last year. We always have some, some spare. If they are there in, in, like, office working rooms, it does get there some people that everyone's not... Okay, twenty four, twenty five, twenty, the annual town meeting, consider feedback from the annual town meeting held on the seventh of May. Councillor Clark's not with us, because this was his agenda, I think. From my perspective, I think it was again disappointing, basically the only people in the room represented.
I'm going to refer to it in my... And we can figure out there. If you want to try and more.
Well, I actually want to say something about annual town meeting now.
No, I'll put it in.
I think we need to try and push it a bit more, maybe we need to bring tea and coffee. Try and get some of the non-councillor.
I don't think that the people at sport highlighted the benefits with the dance game, being one.
Yeah.
And, and sorry, to be with Harry. And it's really good examples of that.
I did keep asking them, and they all said we've done a good job, but I'm... Audience balance, slight audience balance there. It would be nice to have some other people there to bring back into us what they think we should be doing.
I think it's, it's not a problem you need to be all in. And I, I believe two other smaller ones for annual meetings in the last few weeks. And one of them, nobody came, and the other one, four people came. So, okay, there's much smaller, I think. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's because people are dissatisfied necessarily, and I just think... I don't, I don't think, I don't think it's because people are dissatisfied necessarily, and I just think, of course, ten, ten meetings, it's easy there.
I think you might be right. So twenty four, twenty five, twenty one, the events marketing and communication, I don't think that's it.
No, I don't think that's it.
After that, um, at the last, at the last meeting, I made a special note around the, the day anniversary, so I know I don't know the science of things, but what's going to happen on the.
Yeah, um, so we've now got together a, like a brief. Um, it was made, um, a brief programme of events. Um, the ceremony is going to start at Blackwater State. It will be, the cadets are going to do a drill, and I think the sea scouts are going to join, and we've got the. Milsham, Asham Mountains, then Valley coming through as well, so clearly. Um, the Lord Lieutenant, it's not our Lord Lieutenant, it's not, it's, um, a standing, she's away on holiday, but she's going to read the proclamation. Proclamation at nine fifteen, and like the beacon. Um, and we've got the bell ringing at six thirty from the parish church. So we're taking part in those events. Um, just trying to get all the ducks in the hole, really. Um, we're applying for everything to the council, but as we established, you don't get a honest to say whether everything's okay or not. So we're not sure if it is or not, so I'm not sure whether I need to try and get some contact, I'm going to be saying. Um, we've contacted the fire service, haven't we, and I've contacted the police, just to let them know that anybody who's coming along would be great time to support us. Because a lot of us have done a first aid course, and a lot of us, we can steward people. I mean, I don't know how many we're expecting, to be honest, it's a complete mystery as to how many might turn up, because it's late at night, it's through the week, it's a school week. So it could be the twenty turn up, or two hundred turn up, we just don't know. Um, so, yeah, we're just going in and out of the bits and pieces, a bit disappointed today, because I realised that. When I said the thing that confirmed we're taking part, one of the questions is, are you having fish and chips at the beacon, like? Oh, no, I could have got that. Um, so, yeah, it's, um, so I've said this enough, we've got a very nice certificate back for them. Um, and we've got a fresh release, but I don't know if you want to send it out or not, could do. I know that Keith Lee are having a beacon lighting in there, having a few stores, a bit of food, and things that can go with that. And a bit of music, um, so they might, they'll come for a fresh release, but I'll send that on, so. Leave it, yeah, but, yeah, it's, it's coming together nicely, you know, we won't be taking part in an international event, so I think we made the right decision. So, and that's, that's it, really.
So we have the beacon, and we have the gas, uh, we're looking to see it's working bef- before the event. Which, uh, we just discussed after today, so that's where we are at this stage.
I'm just discussing where the beacon's going to go, so I need to find out how much room the cadets are going to take up.
Yeah, if it's, if it's near the edge, we want it in the middle, someone will put it to the middle, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Obviously, everyone, everyone's invited, but it's an open invitation, but, um.
The only thing I was going to do is ask if Bingley Camper Club would take some photographs, because somebody at the forum would take some, something like that.
And then the other, the other thing that he might be getting at, which is just at the very early stages, it's the amazing festival next year. So it's one of the things that our local members want to do, spring it out at the end, book the show, it's the arts and crafts area, but it's now looking to. For next, maybe the first bank holiday, we do something on the Saturday, when the festival, the park, the pop-up farm, or the market. Then on the Sunday, the crafts, and then on the Monday, it's the Walkers Walking Festival, try and tie all that together to be a big, a bingley, mainy festival. So that's a bit one of the things that we're looking at. So, any questions, want to keep that.
I suppose, uh, the, um, Bankton City's carrying on, the electricity is functioning now. But it's not, uh, I've, I've been to, um, I've been to, I have no idea how it works, but, uh, that's something that we need to sort out.
Yeah, we need to formally accept it, don't we?
To Bradford Council. Yeah.
Okay, twenty four, twenty five, twenty two, finance and general purposes.
Um, I think the minutes are self-explanatory, um, the most chunky part of the meeting was going through the standing orders, of which. Thank you to councillor Williams for, um, looking at them forensically, and making us think about some of the particular, um, suggestions. Um, other than that, there were, I mean, there were ongoing issues regarding the allotments, not, not least, um, um. Work, we, we accepted a quite a question for some, we moved some asbestos, which clearly is a matter of some concern. Um, other than that, um, I think the cream, I believe cream, I can't say. Cream, um.
Max, I don't know whether John wants to say anything else about those.
I think they've already said at, uh, the previous meetings that, uh, planning the next little bit at Cross Flats. Uh, I haven't sent out a notification, but that'll be on the twenty second, or the twenty second, it's mine. So, uh, I'll be asking Debbie Shee to help that, um, notification. Uh, I've spoken to friends of, uh, Cross Flats Relief Society, should we say, uh, and, uh, in agreement, so it looks like it's, hopefully we enjoy, we've been very successful last time we've done it. And if any other parish, uh, sorry, um, community groups would like us to go in their area, or that can identify, we would be pleased, yeah. Pardon me? You passed that on, didn't you? Oh, sorry, I'm not an official person.
Okay, um, any, any other questions on that, Chief? Twenty four, twenty five, twenty three, no, go on, going in the group.
So, um, yeah, you've, you've had an update, uh, from the minutes, um, you've also had updates on the, uh, open dates. Um, but in summary, um, I thought the open days will reasonably be attended, both of them, uh, obviously they could be better. Um, we had sixty-six responses to the survey, which again was disappointing, out of seventeen thousand voters. Um, we had eighteen written comments, um, again disappointing, we were at a low level. Um, the good news is our consultant says they can all be dealt with properly, uh, and efficiently within the process, so there were no significant changes going forward. Based on those comments, um, which means that we shouldn't have to go and do a Greg fourteen, uh, again. But we've now chased and got the Bradford results, uh, which the members of the MPG have seen, and they're twenty-one pages, as expected. Uh, twenty-one pages of ten point writing, as expected. Um, and a lot of it is, uh, we agree with this, but you might want to update that, and the Bradford council are doing this, so you might want to look at that. Um, so there's a lot of work there for our consultant to go through, and make sure that all the references within the major plan, uh, related, the latest documents that Bradford are pushing out. Um, that also applies to A D Acom documents, uh, so the consultant's going back to Acom to see if we can open those documents again to. Look at them to make sure that they are accessible, but also can be amended, because they too have references which are not updated. So if you go through the, uh, the Bradford comments, it doesn't, at first sight, it appears horrible, as it, you'd think, with twenty-one pages of, uh, eleven point. But they go, so Lisa hasn't yet seen it, or hadn't yet commented on it, so I guess he might say, each whole morning might say we can deal with it. But, yeah, more update in the future, once, uh, we've had another major plan. We deferred the last one, which was due, uh, uh.
We deferred the last one.
It was due tomorrow, I think, or yesterday, it was due anyway, we cancelled it.
Last, last week?
Yeah, we cancelled it, because we haven't had Bradford's input, so now we've dropped Bradford's input, we can go around the loop again. So, probably more to say at this point, so.
Okay, have you got any comments, where is it now? Okay, twenty four, twenty five, twenty four, the planning, um, councillor's.
Uh, minutes are a catch, self-explanatory, and we might, I might have to prove them at the future minutes.
Any questions for fun? No, okay, twenty four, twenty five, twenty five, five hours away, I think. Um, I've been doing some re-jigging of what it might look like, uh, if we do get it on, okay, then. So, they're slightly different, um, but that's what I'm going to go out and talk to stone maces about, to see whether it's even feasible to get that, whatever the digital. If you're, so, we're in the bank. So, where we are? Any comments, any preferences?
What are different?
They are slightly different. It's looking more like box things, but when you're, what does that make sense? Okay, twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, the town complex report, any comment, question on the town complex report?
Can I just ask, the, the letter to the cottage, the, um, shopkeepers, has that actually gone to them?
Yeah, no, no, I don't remember.
Just see what reaction is, we're working on it, but, um.
Would you want, like, to be informed when it goes?
Well, yeah, I'd just, I'd just like to know what's been said, yeah.
Anything else on the town complex report, do you mind?
No.
Twenty four, twenty five, twenty seven, correspondence, to consider any correspondence, and agree on the action. Including emails from residents, and we've dropped requests represented during the late, the delivery of the mental health plan, we've worked. Well, I didn't think I'd expect from them that they were investigating any requests that were given, I don't know.
It looks like we might get them, I don't know, that is some of the ones.
Possibly need to change that, yeah.
Chair, on E, the email from the highways, you, you, you cover in the whole thing as one, are you, I don't know?
I'll go through them all. Um, so it had to be the email from the bottom of my table, to read the proposal for the building. The consultation period has now expired, I understand. Um, I've heard some comments about how much of a consultation people thought it was, and we're looking to see the next move. So if anybody has any comments they want to make, it seems quite polarising. So, we're living in a, so we all, first look at that. No, okay, so the email from the local student about the thing we showed.
That was, um. I think they were doing, they were writing a report or something about why we've shown it stopped, and want to, no, councillor.
I think it's just a lack of balance, there's nothing wrong with it. It's right to, they're right to vote, which is all good. So then D, the email from the researcher of Lord Foster, read safety of lithium ion batteries and e-bikes and stuff. Anybody have any comments on that, I don't know, which are, no, it's. No, okay, then the email from highways at Bradford Council about the proposed Shidwick area wide traffic regulation order. Now, this is to be put in some double yellows in a few locations, and then changing the waiting times by. Uh, the roads at the side of the pop-up shops to be unrestricted, stop people parking on the ones in front. And councillor.
Do you think it's aimed at, um, school parking, because I looked at the castle filter, and talked about British grammar, and no waiting at any time, and all that. Are they addressing the, the age-old problem of what happens at schools, called the three to three thirty?
Yeah.
Is that what I think it is?
Yeah, that's, that's the reasoning behind it, it's because you can wait on a double yellow to twenty minutes. I don't know, they're not getting it to kick, so they are changing it to try and prevent this blockage, especially because it's causing. Problems for the businesses down there, those that live there, who are unable to swing. Particularly lorries round the corner, because people pass on.
And land, land, oh, what a ridiculous, yeah.
Well, yeah, one of you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's it, so, that's the thinking behind those.
Hmm, thank you.
All in favour of, are we, are we purely navigating?
Yeah.
It says that they're going to make it, uh, no waiting at any time on Cannon Pennington Mills. Uh, it's an absolute nightmare round the whole of Littlelands now, uh, and there's a lot of, um, residents on there, so if they are allowed, if it's no parking at any time. Those residents aren't going to park on, on, in front of the round houses, there is some parking behind the doctor's surgery, but I'm just wondering what, it's just going to reduce the, the parking spaces. Just to comment.
So it's only those two, two lines at the back, isn't it, there? So it's not Cannon Pennington use itself, it's just the vets by the side of the surgeon.
Oh, is it? All right, oh, well, that's all right, oh, right, oh, wow, I haven't seen the back. I got a copy of the plan, it was so, I can't see it so small, I couldn't, couldn't get that.
Yeah, no, it's so.
It just mentioned Cannon Pennington Mills, all right, okay.
So it's just.
There's, there's, there are.
We can't say that.
There's already two areas that doctors flag up anyway, so that, that was high man, okay. Because they say there is some parking behind, helps people that want to go to doctors, yeah.
So I don't think that's essential, but the steps we can still clear, it has, it's just a problem. Uh, I think we get on to twenty four, twenty five, twenty eight, the future direction of the council. Councillor Waddams.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, for your, rest of your councillor's information, I asked Eve to put this on the agenda after the annual town meeting. It's been referred to earlier by, uh, Philip, but, uh. I don't know, last year's annual town meeting only had one other person there who was receiving a grant, and that was Helen herself who sat over there.
I was on holiday, isn't it?
Yes, yes, if you were, you would be there, make, make, so the count.
I'll hook them to you, I think.
Yeah, but that would have made the. Yeah, uh, so this year's ATM, there wasn't even one. Uh, half, half of the councils present here, it didn't bother either, and there was only about five of us out of sixteen. Uh, the chair spoke about McDonald's in an effort to cause conversation and interest, but no one was interested. They were there to forget their costs, and, uh, Phil, uh, asked them what they thought the council should do going forward. I, I actually laughed at that point and left the room, because the only true response they could have given is keep giving us money. Um, so that, that's what I was thinking, because they weren't a representative group of the. Um, so that, that's what I was thinking, because there, there weren't a representative group of them. They were granted, all of them were granted, so it is. Um, and I, I was reflecting on this, I was thinking, well, there's, there's nothing been of any note on the agenda of any meeting for the last six months. Uh, this council is very inward looking, that had itself, um, and all the money, uh, we're paying. So if you, if you think about it, we're spending a hundred and twenty grand a year on admin just to give out grants, which the, oh, and green paint, John, I'm sorry about that, yeah, give out grants and plant some flowers. So the FNGP does that, not this meeting. There's only been one grant which was so high the FNGP couldn't deal with it. So we're existing as a sixteen-person main council, uh, with only six of us doing all the work. Um, from personal feedback, it, it looked to me like the grant recipients saw you were the council. Because all the comments were addressed at year, and it would have been helpful to me, and I should have said it sooner if you'd have gone stood behind us, because we might then have heard some of the conversations when we had to shout at you, so we're thinking you were the council. But I couldn't hear half of it going on, Howard couldn't either. Um, and that was a view, uh, to do with the audience projection of their voices. It was also down to the, um, uh, ambiance of the room, in the, the acoustics of the room itself. Um, no other councillor came to the, uh, neighborhood plan working group sessions either, the two Saturday, Saturday and Sunday. There were just the people there who were, uh, on the neighborhood plan. Um, I've already said that a few other people were interested, the sixty-six contributors and eighteen comments, I'm thinking, why? And, and I'm wondering whether that's because we're not providing them what we want, the, what they want. The neighborhood plan, as we've always known, is a selection of, uh, options. Um, if people came to that meeting thinking, oh, we're going to say there's a new post office and the library's moving over there and the fire station's been coming back over there, you know, giving them an actual plan for the town for the next thirteen years, there might have been some more interest in rather than how does this affect my wall? And we didn't have any many of them either, but, so my general view is, it's quite negative that our community doesn't really care about the town council. Um, so what are we going to do about it? That's what, where I think. I, I've heard statements before in, in meetings such as we're only volunteers. Uh, I've also heard that left away for the result of the referendum before doing anything about it. So come to the conclusion that this isn't a fully thinking council at all. Um, I have a proposition, I'm happy to throw it open for the conversation. Or happy to state my proposition now and see if it holds, uh, any sway.
It's much good looking the other way though, because most people are complaining about this. You know, they're not there saying, you're not doing this and you haven't done that and you haven't done the other. I know, I know apathy isn't perfect, but it's better than people saying, well, you're getting all this money and doing nothing with it.
I mean, I think that the grants, as you said, are a significant thing. The fact that we, um, support the chamber, the Christmas and, um, past Easter and like the fact that we have play in the park. I mean, I think that, you know, sometimes we can underestimate the, the specific basis that which we continually do, all of which doesn't want to make us feel, we still, we still have to go through the process. I mean, I think that we know, all of us who've been on this council, and understand that we have to, um, some, you know, generally through groups, process and everything, um, does, you know, take time sometimes. And, um, we can't always do things just because we suddenly want to do things that the, the drop, perhaps. But I think that, you know, when you see the annual reports, annual reports over recent years, I think that, um, whilst it may not be exciting, I think that there's, um, you know, it's, the council can always make constructive contribution to the, to the.
I, I would agree, I think, I think, you know, it doesn't have to be something that we need to debate for the final. A lot of the projects that we start are, people run with them and they deliver them and it might be that some of the stuff that's a project is now something we do, but, you know, it's a bit like playing the part. We do it and I think it gives a lot of benefit to the community, um, but we don't need to talk about it.
And all the eminence work that's come out to you.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's, that is a big significance.
And all John's litter pickers, they all make a vast, um, and good difference to the community. Um, so I don't think we need to do, we need to be necessarily debating it all the time, we just need to be doing the things that was in our head. Like, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say the thing, I think we're doing a lot more than we were. We can do more, we can do more, we've got to build it up, haven't we? You know, it's building up, not just the cash, but the ideas, getting the people there. You've got to have an infrastructure for people to be aware. You know, we cannot do everything ourselves, sixteen people. Which is why we sort of started the networking groups, et cetera, isn't it, to bring these groups together and then we sort of get more bang for all, yeah. And I think that people who help out with, like groups like Friends, Friends of Prince Wales Park or Crossroads Cricket Club or whoever it may be, I was with Gil, you tend to, if you're the person saying go for a grant, you then become involved with it. As a council, that in your own mind, so it's more than that really, but we're doing it already.
Yeah, maybe it is actually, to some extent, our publicity, maybe we don't take enough credit for things that we are doing or helping particularly others to do. So we give the grants, we're supporting local communities, you know, get a bit more credit for doing that. And it might encourage other folks to say, well, that's right. You know, they might simply bring me to town council, that we could get involved in, all them having assistance with something. So to some extent, publicity, maybe we need to keep repeating, I would say, to some extent.
Any more?
Um, the, one of the comments from Ian Cunningham, who is the local plan guy in Bradford council, talking about the community priorities and aspirations. Now, you all seen those as an extract from the neighborhood plans. Um, these are the, some of the things that, uh, we don't have to wait for the referendum to do. Uh, one of them was, uh, seeing the sides of the plant fields and the schools. And I agreed to think that would be a roundabout connection on the clock, you know, to bring me into that. Uh, the other one I proposed that I'd do with councillor Good was the walk in the cycling path, which, uh, hardly came out with, and possibly we can do a similar one for Bingley, but the comments from Ian Cunningham's team is, they, they say the inclusion of this chapter is welcomed. Uh, it should be made clear within the introductory text of this section that not all the matters, issues, aspirations identified can be addressed via the neighborhood plan or the planning system. For example, provision of a defrigerator in Mickleford. It'd like to be something that only can be delivered by lobby, by the NHS, the ambulance service or the charity section. It is noted that many of the actions to deliver its aspirations were called the Bingley Town Council. Whilst there is some reference to working with other groups, bodies or organisations, it may be useful to provide some more detail for the bodies, et cetera, the town council aim to work with as part of the table to help deliver the aspirations. So my proposition would be that each and every one of us would take a look at the community priorities and aspirations table on page thirty-six and thirty-seven of the neighborhood plan, or thirty-seven to forty-three, sorry, of the neighborhood plan. And, um, take a punt of what you want to do, who you want to do it with, when you're going to do it, how much is it going to cost, risk and resources and all that, and see if we can stimulate some, uh, oomph to doing things throughout our community. I know what you said, that you all, uh, say, well, I'm on the planning group and I'm on the FNGP and I do cooking nights and I do litter picking and that, but, but we know people that are sitting around this table, they don't do it all the lot, they're non-working councillors. And, uh, I, I think, uh, we should try and make them working councillors. So that would be my proposition, that we, we all come back and say, well, I'm going to do this, or try to do this at least.
Okay, can I move the votes taken on this issue?
It doesn't need to be, as, 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 would you move on if we're?
Well, I've got a proposition if someone wants to second it, that would be my proposition, and then you can all vote it down. As per standing orders, but, you know, if it doesn't get seconded, it don't get seconded.
Well, there's a one on there, yeah.
No. Okay, I've had my moment, on record, on now, on the issue.
I mean, I think noted and it, it's up to individual councillors to come forward with risk and resources for the projects that they, they want to do. So obviously for this year, this current financial year which we've just started, those, those risk and resources and business cases came forward in, in the October, Prince of Janting ceremony. Because we set a, set the name of our project. But, yeah, people should be thinking about what they want to deliver and bring forward for, for next year if you come to this.
But you're al, you're also aware, Chair, that I'm, I was chair of Bingley Conservative Association. And I know for a fact that the Conservatives, the Blues that don't want this council to exist, and I know the Reds, well, only on this council because they don't want to, because they're on to stand again. So, you know, if you feel like you don't want to contribute, then do the honorable thing with the honest party. Let's get some people who want to do so.
That's individual choices, isn't it?
Absolutely, uh, democracy election, or democracy in the election.
Go on, I like it, it's good. Thank you. I agree with quite a lot of what you said, Steve, and I don't blame you on it, so definitely. Um, but I would say, as somebody who's been involved, you know, since the, um, the, the, the move to have a Bingley Town Council, we've come a long way. And the first few years, virtually everything that the council did was controversial, that caused, you know, lots, lots of discontent and nastiness really from the president and various, uh, articles, articles, and that we don't want. Um, and that's all really quietened down now, and I think that the town council has become accepted. All the groups that I know and part of, that, you know, I'm, I'm involved with, kind of accept that the town council's there and, and are happy with what it's doing. And, and are sort of glad that it's there as, as a focus and to help those groups. So I think we've gone from being very, very controversial to kind of being part of the furniture, which in one way is a good thing. You know, people have listed all the different things that go on every year, but it just gets done and people expect them to be done. But I also agree with his thing is that, um, from the kind of enthusiasm and vigour and energy of a lot of the councillors in the early days, that, that, that there is, um, a, a, a lack, shall we say, of the same. Um, but again, Philip's point, you've got your plans for the year, you've got your money in place, so this year is, is sorted. But that doesn't stop people coming up with ideas. And I think one of the things that puts people off is the threat of risk and resource assessment for a new project. And I don't know whether there's something that can be done to support people writing those, because they can be quite tricky, don't you think?
Thank you, Ryan, the, the bureaucracy that goes behind some of those things. How ways, what have you got to do with it? What have you got?
Thank you, darling. Any more for anyone?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, obviously I couldn't understand what Steve is going from as well, and I agree with all the comments that Helen's made as well, you know, being on the council on that. I think in, in terms of regardless of the colour, red or blue, I think the, our district councillors have been, you know, hardworking as well, you know, I mean, I think that complements, you know, I mean, what the town councillors are doing at home at the same time. So I think we're working in general together as a team, so I don't think it's all negative. And I'm not seeing that when we're talking to residents, how, that they're fairly, seems to be fairly happy with the town council work. Obviously, some councillors are going to be more effective, more effective, and some councillors will be quieter, but they still get to do their work in their own way, I think. So I think, you know, I mean, we should appreciate people giving the time and effort on a voluntary basis, so I think that's the point.
We have, we have to recognise that, that for those of us that, that are retired, who are on time, and those that are still, still working. People have different calls and time, I have to respect. Okay, moving on then, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-nine, promotional items, consider any promotional items that we've proposed as from this meeting? Did you? Yes. Suppose we, we have, we have proposed, ADRs, old parties, we've passed them. New membership have committed?
Actual vacancy. Confirmation, can you, uh, confirm it? Maybe a good direct people, uh, to the link to look at potential, uh, traffic regulation orders within the ward, some people might like and support them, some people might think this could have probably affect our business, so, so it's worth, and then it's a part of our district councillors.
Anything else we can push through? Want to answer? Okay, twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty, the date of the next meeting, sort of the last, who's done?
Twenty, better, June, twenty-two.
The location for that?
Here. Okay, then the twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty.